Good morning, I'm going to call this meeting to order. I call to order the Special Administrative Meeting of the Bernabeu County Commission for Monday, January 14, 2019. We're going to begin today's meeting with a silent invocation, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance that will be led by our county clerk, Linda Stover.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. So I want to start this morning by welcoming everyone to the chamber and thanking you for being here. Today, I think as you know, the county commission has the responsibility for naming a replacement for Senator Cisco McSorley, who has represented Senate District 16 for many years. I think we all recognize this is a huge responsibility on our parts. Senator McSorley has represented this district, in which I've lived for many years. He's been a great example of how a senator can be responsive to the community and responsive to the state as a whole. And I want to just specifically thank everybody who has submitted his or her name for consideration today. As I have had the opportunity to go through the resumes and learn more about each of the candidates, it is really astonishing, the level of talent and community engagement that's been demonstrated by everybody who has submitted a name. And it's very clear to me that any one of the candidates could very responsibly and well represent District 16, but it's going to be a difficult choice because there are so many qualified candidates. But I did want to give my very sincere thanks to everybody who has either put in his or her name, or those of you who are here to support these candidates. I'd like to start today's meeting by asking our county attorney to just let everybody know what our authority is for the action today, and secondly, explain our process so it's clear to everybody how we will proceed.
Thank you, Madam Chair and members of the commission. This meeting comes to us based upon the vacancy, as you have pointed out. The Constitution provides how it will be filled, and it becomes a duty of this commission to fill the vacancy for this senate seat. It's especially true since this is a single-county district seat, so it's this commission's decision only, and it's your constitutional authority and duty to do it. That comes to us from Article 4, Section 4 of the state constitution. For those looking at the little book, it's 23 pages, 23 and 24 of that. So the vacancy will be filled by the county commission. The way the county commission then does that, its constitutional duty, is go to their own process, which required them to create a special meeting notice. And when they first found out, we realized we had to set in place a timeline to do it in an adequate manner to give an opportunity for the public and the applicants to put in their names. And Julianne Baca did a great job with it. This meeting has been noticed under the provisions of Special Administrative Meeting. It's been noticed properly, and we're here today properly in the public meeting for that purpose. The chair runs the meeting, and the chair makes determinations about how to fairly run the meeting. Of course, that would always be in concert with the chair's membership on the board. Generally, what will happen is an opportunity for citizens to address, which was placed in the agenda. I think notice went out for citizens to address the chair with regard to the specific issue of the appointment. There was an allowance to do something, I think is really great for this county, is that they allow online signing in to address early on, and then in-person signing in. So I think, Madam Chair, that has happened, and the chair may want to inquire whether or not everybody's had an opportunity to sign in that may want to. And then, Madam Chair, I think it would be up to you to decide how to proceed going forward. Our general rule for standard meetings is two minutes per person. However, the chair may want to decide whether or not they want to vary from that for purposes of time and allowing people to address. The other issue is whether or not a second is required. Generally, this commission uses seconds. I think probably staying with your regular process makes sense. It's only fair in any event, because a second would be kind of one and two to decide to discuss this nomination. But if a person didn't get a second, they probably wouldn't have been getting the vote anyway, so there's no unfairness in requiring a second for following up on a nomination. But that will be up to the chair and the commission how they'd like to proceed. The general rule, I think, is just to proceed as you normally proceed. There will be some special circumstances, since this is an extraordinary constitutional duty. To any other questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Commissioners, any questions? Over to the county attorney. Commissioner O'Malley.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So I was trying to remember the last process where we appointed, actually I think it was Senator Mimi Stewart. And so you said the public noticed when, so I think there was some confusion amongst some applicants about whether or not they could have their supporters here to speak on their behalf. And I wasn't clear as to what to tell folks. I was confused myself. I thought it was basically the applicants who had the opportunity to speak, but that's not the case.
Yeah, and the agenda's very specific on it. It was published in a very timely manner. You'll look at item number four, it's a public comment, and it's a public comment reserve approval item only. I would suggest that that public comment will affect both those folks who have submitted a letter of interest and all others. There may be some that would be wanting to speak towards a very specific issue or a specific applicant, or they may want to speak to, in general terms, what they think the applicant should look like, or what should be important for the applicant. So I think you would have both applicants and others being able to speak to this approval item only.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments? One thing I did want to address, I have gotten some feedback, some individuals expressing their concern about why the county commission wanted to move quickly on this. Making this decision in a timely way that allows the nominee to be in Santa Fe tomorrow for the start of the session, I feel is really important, and important to the district that District 16 have a representative seated for opening day. So again, that is consistent with our policy. We have done that in the past when there has been a fairly short timeframe for these appointments. So I just wanted to make sure that there was no concern about that, that we were in some way wanting to avoid community input. We absolutely have welcomed that. We have noticed this meeting and people's opportunity in every way possible. So again, it is really a priority that we have somebody seated tomorrow at noon. So that gives the successful applicant a full 24 hours to prepare. With that, we are going to begin public comment. As always, we ask everybody in the chamber to be respectful as people are speaking, no booing, no cheering. Again, and we do have a large number of people signed up to speak today, so I would ask, what I'm going to do is allow applicants, candidates for this position to speak for two minutes, and then everybody else, one minute. And it was noticed that only comment that is on our topic today will be appropriate. So with that, is that acceptable, commissioners? All right, with that, let's move forward. Julie, how many people do we have signed up?
We have a total of 40 signed up, 13 applicants and 27 speakers.
Okay, so we will just go in the order in which people signed up. And again, just in the interest of time, I know this is a Monday morning, there are a lot of people who have taken off work, people have obligations, so don't feel you have to take the entire time period that has been allotted to you. And I think we can also, you know, at the end, allow people to stand up to express their support for a particular candidate. So with that, let's get started. Julie will call the names in order, and each speaker will have two minutes. The candidates will have two minutes. Bell will sound after 90 seconds, meaning giving you notice, you've got 30 seconds to wrap up your comments. So with that, let's get started.
Raul Candelaria, Stephen Benj, Antonet Sidia Lopez. And as I state your name, if you can just come down to the floor, make your way down to the floor.
My name is Raul Candelaria. I'm an applicant for Senate District 16. I'm a registered Democrat and a member of the Democratic Party. I believe in the democratic ideals of Bobby Kennedy, and that's how I carry myself as best as I can be. My goal is to serve the constituents of Senate District 16, Governor Lujan Grisham, and the people of New Mexico, to the best of my abilities and expertise in order to move New Mexico forward. I live in Senate District 16. I'm a 13th generation New Mexican, committed to improving New Mexicans and all people who live in New Mexico. I'm a problem solver and believe in the future of New Mexico. I have 25 years' experience in public policy, economic development, communications, and leadership. I've worked in the private sector and owned my own business, and I've worked in the public sector as well, for corporations, nonprofits, as well as government entities. I'm a Woodrow Wilson Fellow. I graduated from Harvard University, John F. Kennedy School of Government, with a master's in public policy. I did my master's thesis under the Harvard Project in American Indian Economic Development. I attended the LBJ School of Public Affairs at UT Austin, at the Woodrow Wilson Junior Institute. I attended the University of New Mexico, and graduated there with a degree in communications. I believe in serving the people of New Mexico. I believe New Mexico is at a crossroads when it comes to education, healthcare, economics. And that crossroad is either we increase our capacity in those areas, as well as environment, or we stay stagnant and in the quagmire of the last 10 years. I choose the former and to serve the people of Senate District 16 and the people of New Mexico. I was also awarded the American Red Cross Real Heroes Award for disarming an active shooter in the workplace. Thank you for your time. I appreciate you, Commissioner. Thank you for your service, as well as the staff.
Thank you.
I greatly appreciate the moment of time you provided to allow me to speak this morning. My name is Stephen Benj. Since I was a young man, I have served my country and my community. As a former active-duty member of the Marine Corps, I displayed leadership abilities and traits by conducting myself in a firm, fair, and impartial manner as a platoon sergeant of over 60 junior Marines. Currently, as a representative of marginalized and alienated populations, I have focused on improving, advocating for, and protecting the rights and well-being of these individuals, groups, and families, of those not only within the 16th District, but the entire city of Albuquerque. Problem-solving for others who are incapable of addressing issues in their lives is a daily occurrence for me. Through collaboration, understanding, patience, innovation, caring, and strategic planning, concerns these individuals face are resolved for the long term. These are strategies which are utilized in the legislative process for our great state. With my experience representing various different populations, I am well-suited to represent the district, the city of Albuquerque, and the state of New Mexico. As I related in my letter of interest, I'm a father, student, an employee, a veteran, and a citizen of the district. I recognize the strengths within the community, but also identify the weaknesses that it encompasses. I know that in order to make change, you must start small while envisioning the bigger picture. As a representative, I will strive to ethically and morally make sound judgments for those who entrust their care in my abilities. Regardless of decision made today, I will continue my fight for the rights and well-being of my fellow New Mexicans. I want to extend my best wishes and luck to all the other candidates, and know that you will make the best decision for the district. Thank you.
Antonet Sidia Lopez, Mariana Anaya, Tommy Jewell, Christopher Papaleo.
Good morning, Buenos dias. Chairwoman Hart Stebbins, commissioners. By now, you probably already know my background. I grew up on a farm in Valencia County. I worked my way through UNM and UCLA School of Law. I became a law professor. I headed a domestic violence agency in Lanza Comunitario, and I've worked on many community projects over the years. And you also probably know that I just spent 16 months running for Congress. From my letter of interest, you can see how much all of this experience has meant to me, as a person, and how I believe that it will make me an effective and collaborative legislator. Today, the first thing I'd like to emphasize is that serving as a state senator for District 16 is a perfect use of my knowledge, my skills, and my values. I have the mind for this, I have the passion for this, and I can meaningfully contribute to the senate for my district and for our state. Over my career as a legal practitioner, educator, and advocate, my favorite projects were those at the intersection of policy and people. I love to work with people, I love to work for people, and I love to analyze policy and debate how it'll have an effect on people and on their everyday lives. The second thing I want you to know is that I'm very familiar with legislative priorities for Bernabeu County, and I am impressed, I'm really impressed, with how they can make a difference in the lives of our county residents. I'm very committed to working closely with you to maximize what we can do for our counties. And the final point I'd like to make today is that if I am appointed, I am ready to start the work today. I'm currently the Legislative Director for the New Mexico Coalition Against Domestic Violence, and I've been working on legislation for this very session, including a gun safety bill, a bill to facilitate survivors' ability to vote. I've been reviewing proposed legislation, and I've already been working with legislators to prepare for this session. I am ready to hit the ground running as a senator. I was privileged to attend Senator McSorley's final townhow yesterday. He has quite the legacy to follow. I would be honored to do so. Thank you.
Well, good morning, commissioners. My name is Mariana Anaya, and first, I would like to start off by thanking those who signed onto a letter of support, over 120 folks, as well as my mentor, Dr. Leila Flores Duñez, who will be speaking on my professional behalf today, in terms of my knowledge and culturally relevant teaching and learning. Education policy will absolutely be a hot topic this session. As you know, there's the Yasi Martinez lawsuit, and culturally relevant teaching and learning is something that Governor Michelle Lujan Grisham has said is a priority for her this session. I have a background in Mexican-American Studies and Policy, as well as Race and Ethnic Studies and Education. I've been advocating for these types of programs since 2011 in my work with the Texas Center for Education Policy, also in developing ethnic studies programs, K-5, and working in St. Elmo Elementary in Austin, Texas, as well as my work here in Albuquerque with the Albuquerque Teachers Federation. I was born and raised in Albuquerque in the North Valley, and I'm a proud public school graduate, and really, I see my candidacy for this office as full circle, because public school educators saved my future. Just as teachers believed in me, I believe in the future of Senate District 16, all of its constituents, all of its students, and all of its potential. If you'll take a look at the list of the supporters, you'll see, of course, school board members, city councilors, representatives. Many of the folks couldn't be here today, they're working-class folk, there are a lot of educators on the list, but it really speaks to my ability to move communities. I feel like that's something that really lends to my candidacy. As you know, it takes more than a list of qualifications to be able to engage folks in meaningful conversation, especially at the political and policy level. I am a bridge builder, and I have been a bridge builder my entire life. So today, I ask that you look future-forward with me. My name is Mariana Anaya, and I ask for your vote. Thank you very much.
Good morning, Madam Chair and members of the commission. My name is Tommy Jewell. I am a resident of District 16. I live in the southern area of District 16, but I note for you that I was actually raised at the eastern end in a little section called the East End Edition that was segregated at the time that my family moved there. I'm thrilled to tell you that I graduated from Monzano High School, went on to New Mexico State University, received a law degree from University of New Mexico, and at the age of 29, became the first African-American judge in the state of New Mexico. I gave nearly 22 years of service on the bench, and since that time, have had the opportunity to come full circle back into law practice. I offer my experience, desire, and earnest effort, and would ask that you vote for me for this important position. Thank you for your time.
Christopher Papaleo, Angeli Teneja, Leanna Vargas, Marl Walden Montoya.
Good morning. I'm Christopher Papaleo, a lifelong Democrat who grew up in District 16, left to go to college and returned 13 years ago, and I'm happy to be there. My legislative priorities match the priorities of our district and are in line with Senator McSorley's and the governor's. With respect to education, we must expand pre-K programs for all New Mexico's children, increase funding statewide, not only with our current one-time surplus seed money, but by drawing a larger percentage of the permanent fund to ensure that education is properly funded going forward. Our land commissioner has suggested an increase in the royalty caps on oil and gas, and we can use that money to draw more from the fund. Criminal justice is also a very important issue in our district, and again, my views match up with Senator McSorley's, including the bills that he has prefilled this session. I have done work on these issues in the past as a paralegal, and most recently with the ACLU of New Mexico as a law student. I understand that these bills are important to our community. I have already read them, worked on them, and I will move them forward as much as possible this session. I've worked on election protection, volunteered for Emerge New Mexico, knocked doors and phone-banked for candidates. I have worked with homeless youth through CASACU, the APS Title I project, and most recently, taught constitutional literacy in Albuquerque High School through the Marshall Brennan Literacy Program. I am also a former board member of my neighborhood association. I care deeply about my community, and I'm willing to work for it. I am currently in law school, but I've arranged to take a leave of absence, and am able to rearrange my calendar to do the great work of this job, including important time outside of the legislative session. Diversity in our senate is very important, including LGBTQ voices, and I would very much like to be another LGBTQ voice in Santa Fe. I have roots in the district and have helped with campaigns in the past, and I know what it takes to be elected. I care deeply about my community and ask that you allow me to continue to work for it as the next senator of District 16. Thank you for your time.
I am not Angeli, I'm Eleanor Chavez. Angeli is out of town, and she asked me to read a statement for her, if that's okay. County Commissioners, I am unable to be present today as I am in Indianapolis as one of 10 burqueños proudly representing New Mexico at the Robert Wood Johnson Foundation Health and Community Leaders Institute. I return home tomorrow. As a child of immigrants, as a queer woman of color, as a doctor of the people, as a community organizer, as someone who has contributed to the impactful policy change in Bernabeu County and nationally, I would bring a Swiss Army knife of skills and experiences, as well as a great love for my community, to the important role of senator for District 16. My track record has shown that I have a deep understanding of the needs of New Mexicans and the solutions possible to achieve greater health equity, safety, and economic justice for our community. And my life's work has been focused on creating and sustaining innovative models of truly community-responsive healthcare and healing. I am the Executive Director and a practicing physician at Casa de Salud, a bold and integrative healthcare and healing center that supports those who have been most marginalized by society and sees them as leaders in our community. I can effectively reach across the aisle while remaining steadfast about implementing truly bold solutions. I would also bring critical healthcare expertise and leadership to our state senate. I help draft and advocate for state legislation to cap costs of hospital care for New Mexicans without insurance or without adequate insurance, because no New Mexican should have to struggle with medical bankruptcy. I have also stood hand-in-hand with community members in supporting humane medical and addictions treatment in our county jail and in supporting the safety net responsibility of UNMH Hospital. Every single day, I work with my brothers and sisters in the community. My sleeves are rolled up, and I am tried and ready to take on this incredible responsibility of serving Senate District 16, and I respectfully ask for your vote. Thank you.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the commission. My name is Leanna Vargas, and I thank you for the opportunity to address the commission. As a fourth-generation New Mexican and eight-year resident of District 16, I'm excited to speak to you about the interest in filling this vacancy. As a nurse, I've spent my career advocating for patients and populations that need a strong voice to represent their needs. My interest in this appointment stems from a strong desire to utilize my advocacy skills for the community I work in and the place that I call home. Representing District 16 comes with a unique set of responsibilities, as it encompasses Kirtland Air Force Base, state fairgrounds, Nob Hill, and the UNM community, all of which are important, not only to our district, but also to the community and the state. As a former UNM student and now a UNM faculty member, I'm well-positioned to provide a unique perspective on the needs of the UNM community. Although I don't have direct experience with Kirtland Air Force Base or the state fairgrounds, my skill sets of conducting community assessments and engaging stakeholders will be essential in this role, and I'm confident that such a skill set will allow me to become familiar with the needs and operations of these entities. The most valuable asset that our district has are the people who encompass our community. They're made up of various cultures, and such diversity is one of the many reasons why people decide to live in this community. The vision for this district is to continue to attract residents who appreciate such diversity and the many unique opportunities our district has. One such opportunity is the community-oriented schools within our district, and continuing to fund those schools. As a mother of two small elementary children and a school board member of St. Mark's Montessori, education is key. To continue to build on our district's assets, I feel it's very important for us to address some of the challenges that we have, such as homelessness, addiction, and they're major concerns for our families, but also our businesses. I feel as a community health nurse and administrator, I have the skill set to address those and looking into socioeconomic disparities. I want to thank you for the opportunity- I want to thank you for the opportunity to speak to you today.
Mauro Walden Montoya, Jennifer Gomez Chavez, Sam Haworth, Adrian Barboa.
Good morning, members of the Commission. My name is Mauro Walden Montoya, and I am asking for your support today. I'm an Albuquerque native. I grew up in the southeast tights, not far from this district. I went to Holy Ghost Catholic School in St. Pius, and I graduated proudly from Highland High School, where my father was a teacher. Both my parents were APS teachers, and they instilled in me the value of a good education. I went to New Mexico State, and then I went to George Washington University Law School in DC. I want to work to revamp our lottery system so that we have more opportunity for our kids to go to school. I want to work with the governor and the legislature to make sure that education becomes something that our kids have the opportunity for, so that we give them something to stay home for. In DC, I did a lot of legislative work. I helped pass the Americans with Disabilities Act by testifying in Congress, helping write the bill. I helped in DC to pass the Domestic Partnership Bill when I was living there. I ran for DC City Council in 1994, and then my partner and I moved to Puerto Rico because he got transferred, so I gave the money I had raised for that position to an AIDS organization. I have very much legislative experience, and I can hit the ground running today. Business experience, I'm the immediate past president of the Gay and Lesbian Chamber of Commerce here in Albuquerque. I've owned my own small businesses, currently one is now is a small property management business, and I believe that our economic development is crucial for our district. We have some of the biggest economic developers in our district, Cortland Air Force Base, Sandia Labs, Nob Hill, Uptown, and I believe that it's very important that we use all these assets to bring our economic status up, because we do not have that economic status right now. I will work in the legislature to do this. I want to see more industries like the movie industry. I want to help the governor get rid of the cap so that we can bring more movies in. We've got the state fair, we've got tourism, all of that I've helped work on with Visit Albuquerque. I've been active in the community. I am currently the mayor's LGBTQ ambassador. I have worked with the New Mexico Pride Guide, and I am 60. I'm retired. I have the time, the motivation, the desire, and the skills to do this. I ask, and the diversity, I ask for your support today, and I look forward to working with all of you. Thank you very much.
Jennifer Gomez Chavez, Sam Haworth, Adrian Barboa, Chelsea Van De Vertin.
Honorable Chair and honorable members of the Bernalillo County Commission, my name is Jennifer Gomez Chavez, and I'm a proud native New Mexican, and I'm here today to tell you why I want to be appointed to the New Mexico Senate Seat District 16. My passion is to advocate for those who don't have a voice in the legislative process and to truly give back to my community. We don't have enough constituents that are involved in the legislative process, and I'd like to engage more of the community to truly represent them and their voices in such a critical, important process. Additionally, we need more bilingual Latinas, and there's a huge gap, an equity gap, in terms of that. I represent the district, I know the district well, and I've lived in the district for 22 years. The top three issues that I've advocated for for the past 10 years, the first, living, people living with disabilities. I know firsthand the challenges with the healthcare system. I've advocated for 10 years for people who live with multiple sclerosis, and I was instrumental in passing the STEP Therapy Bill last year in 2018. Education, I've dedicated my life working with students, families, and community partners to increase educational access and success for students for nearly 30 years. Currently, I work at the University of New Mexico, and I currently serve as a Special Assistant to the Vice President for Equity and Inclusion, and I've been there for 20 years, 24 years. Also, I would be advocating for economic development. As you know, we have the brain drain phenomenon. It is my goal to help keep our best and brightest here in this state, who actually can help continue leading our wonderful efforts. With that, I would like to ask you for your vote, and I promise you, you will always have an open door with me, and I will always be here to help you in anything you may need. Thank you, and thank you for your leadership.
Sam Haworth, Adrian Barboa, Chelsea Van Devert.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Commissioners. You have a copy of my resume and my letter of intent, and I realize that I left out an important detail, and that is that I am a lifelong Democrat. I want to talk about something slightly different, though, this morning. Some of you may know that I have twins, they're 27. My son was born with cerebral palsy, and my daughter was not. So prior to their birth, I worked as an engineer, not an engineer, but I was employed as an engineer. When they were born, I was struck immediately with the difference in the way in which the world treated my two children, and they treated my son quite differently, as in we couldn't get him into an early care and education setting for a long time. So I changed the course of my life and became an early interventionist, started an inclusionary pre-K program called Project Jericho at Altamira. Then I started working at Parents Reaching Out as the Assistant Director, and that's when my life connected with policy work. So since 1997, I don't think there's been a legislative session where I haven't been involved in educating, informing, advocating, writing legislation, amending legislation. I became then the State Director of Special Education when my son transitioned to elementary school, and then I was asked by then-Secretary Lujan Grisham to run the Developmental Disability Support Division, which oversees a Didi waiver. Then I oversaw policy for Secretary Grisham and was one of two-point lobbyists for her and Governor Richardson on their health package. So I have a lot of experience with the legislature. I actually lived next door to Cisco McSorley and across the street for many years. I'm sorry, I'm nervous. So anyway, that's a little bit about me. You have my letter and my resume.
Adrian Barboa and Chelsea Van Deventer.
Good morning. Hello, I'm Adrián Barboa, and I'm here to ask for your appointment to Senate District 16. I strive to recognize the indigenous lands we stand on and thank Creator and ancestors for allowing me to be here in front of you today. Órale, offering resources and learning empowerment. It was a program designed by UNM Metta students Debbie Martinez and Raul Candelaria, who you heard from earlier today. I was one of the first mentors of that student-driven program that was so successful that is currently the largest statewide mentoring and success program in our state in La Cien, New Mexico. Right about the time we were finishing up that, on the southeast side of Albuquerque, there was a group of young women of color, some who worked with local sexual assault and domestic violence groups that saw the cultural needs of indigenous and women of color and LGBTQ women not being met by those services, and our voices were not being represented in almost any table, so they formed Young Women United. I am honored to have served eight years as the Executive Director of Young Women United, which is now a policy and research powerhouse for the state, still led by young women of color. Are you starting to see a pattern? So I then, after those eight years, formed Strong Families New Mexico, because we saw a political scene where 50-plus-one in pay-to-play campaigns leave out people, often communities of color, and turn, most of our resilient families don't make it to the ballot box because no campaign finds it valuable enough to talk to unlikely voters. See, I know my biggest accomplishment is that I am blessed with the gift of relationship building, meaning I help build strong coalitions and bridge unlikely partnerships and see where there is critical mass and opportunity to move together. I have lived my whole life in District 16. I know that I live across the street from one of Albuquerque's largest housing projects that was built specifically to house Vietnamese refugees. I know that my water quality has changed because of jet fuel leaks still unresolved. I felt empathy and anger and protection when the Muslim center down the street experiences attacks. I know that Gibson used to be vibrant with businesses, and I know that the behavioral health services that are mostly housed in our district always have a waiting list. In 1986, my father built our house with scrap metal from the neighboring factory. He built an anchor on it with, on our home, and so that I would always be anchored home. I am here to say that Senate District 16 is what I, I am what Senate District 16 needs. I am anchored and ready to go. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Good morning, Commissioners. Is this our microphone? Okay. Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Chelsea Van Deventer. Thank you for your time this morning. I am a registered Democrat who lives in the district. I went to UNM for my bachelor's degree as well as for my law degree. I have a strong connection to the district. My great-grandparents built an original house in Nob Hill. They also opened Albuquerque Yellow Cab in the district. My grandma was raised in the Nob Hill home. She raised my father there, and I was raised in that home as well. When I purchased my forever home in the district five years ago, one of the main attractions was the proximity to that family historical home in Nob Hill, and the fact that I would get to drive by it every day on my way to work. I also went to Bandelier Elementary School and lived in the district throughout my, throughout college and throughout law school. You have a lot of great candidates here, but I would like to ask for your support. I am smart, I'm driven, and I am ready to hit the ground running. I understand perfectly how policymaking works, as well as the existing body of law in New Mexico and New Mexico's Constitution. I share the deeply held values of my district's constituency, and I am ready to serve. If appointed, I am the best equipped of all of the illustrious candidates here to be a leader in criminal justice reform. Criminal justice is an issue at the heart of this session, and I will be doing more than merely applying the values of our district to legislative votes, which I will do adeptly. But writing policy is my hobby. During my five years at the Public Defender, I wrote several bills, one of which passed, which was no small feat. I wrote a bail bill, a pre-trial detention bill limiting homelessness crimes. I sit at this very dais in my appointment to the Police Oversight Board, where we spend more than 50% of our time doing policy work. I was instrumental in achieving constitutional use of force policy for APD. I have a specialty in juvenile justice, and I have served as a subject matter expert on that topic, and this is a criminal justice niche and specialty that is not well-represented by our current legislative body, and I am able to bring something of value to this topic this session where these issues are front and center. So thank you for your time this morning, and thank you.
Andres Patrick Valdez.
Madam Chair, Commissioners, thank you for this opportunity. My name is Andres Valdez. I'm a candidate for Senate District 16. I hate to brag, but I think I'm in a position where I have to kind of tell you who I really am. I am the most qualified candidate in this, in this room. I've been an activist since 1968. Can anybody beat that? I've been at the state legislature for 33 years. I've gotten laws passed. We've changed a portion of our state's constitution. We were the creators of the Public Regulation Commission. Many of you, or some of you, might not agree with all of the things that the Commission has become, but it's not about what we passed, it's about what we were able to get accomplished. It took us 10 years to do that. That's a lot of perseverance. I am your person for the job. I know there's a lot of people here talked about their favorite, or some of the issues that they're passionate about. The job is not about just the issues you're passionate about, it's about all the issues that encompass your district, and even more so, it's not about the issues that only encompass your district, it's about the issues that encompass the whole state. When you go up to Santa Fe, you don't only represent your district, you represent the whole state. Our state is 50th to the nation lowest in per capita income. Vecinos United, for a long time, has sought to develop alternative economic development. Maggie, I think I'm the only person who has approached you to talk to you about legislation this year regarding civilian oversight of law enforcement. Michelle Lujan Grisham has co-sponsored a bill that we intend, hopefully if she'll get it passed, to bore reform on DA. I had a whole list of issues I wanted to talk in last. Whoever you choose to be our state senator, he or she is invited to be at the Matz Hall Library, January the 18th, at 3:30 PM. We want to introduce our newest state senator. Thank you. I hope you choose me.
That concludes applicant comments. We move on to public speaking speakers.
Thank you. And again, I would just, in the interest of time, remind everybody, you don't have to take the whole minute, but you certainly are welcome to.
Again, when I state your name, please make your way down to the podium. Adrian Carver, Andrea Serrano, Bethany Baca, and Dr. Leila Flores Duñez.
Actually, before we start, Julie, so as far as notice, will you sound the bell after 30 seconds?
I sound it at 30 seconds.
Okay, so just to be clear, for all of the individuals who will be speaking now, you'll have one minute. A bell will sound after 30 seconds has elapsed, giving you 30 seconds to wrap up your comments. Thank you. And please do try to stay within, out of respect for everybody here, please do stay within the time allotted.
Madam Chair, Commissioners, my name is Adrian Carver. I'm the Executive Director at Equality New Mexico. We're the state's largest and oldest LGBTQ advocacy organization, and I celebrate all the members of the LGBTQ community that put their name forward for consideration. As a resident of District 16 and somebody who was maybe interested in applying for the position, I thought critically about the opportunity that an open seat presents, and I came to the conclusion that representation matters. Out of 112 of members of the New Mexico Legislature, only two are LGBTQ, and out of 42 members of the Senate, only seven are women. It's an incredible disparity, and at this levels of government, it's unacceptable. In the 2018 election, voters sent a resounding message that they want more women and more people of color in elected office, and we know at Equality New Mexico how important decision-making bodies are, and so I highly encourage the County Commission to select a queer woman of color to replace Senator Cisco McSorley. Thank you for your time.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Members of the Commission. My name is Andrea Serrano. I'm a lifelong resident of Albuquerque, and we're lucky to have so many qualified candidates for this seat, many of whom I call my friend. This Senate seat should reflect the district, which is multiracial and multicultural. The Senate should look like the district and should reflect the state. I'm here this morning specifically to speak on behalf of Adrián Barboa. In a time where the most draconian and punitive laws are coming out of DC, we need a state legislature that will hold the line for healthcare, reproductive rights, including abortion, immigrant rights, and education. Adrián Barboa not only has the drive, but she has the policy experience and has been working with the legislature for well over a decade. She's been working in our community for over 20 years. I call her my friend as well as my mentor. She's been running campaigns and bridging communities across the state, and beyond her experience, Adrián is a lifelong resident of her district. She is Senate District 16, she is Albuquerque, she is New Mexico. Please confirm Adrián Barboa for Senate District 16.
Bethany Baca, Dr. Leila Flores Duñez, Selinda Guerrero, Denisea Cadenha.
Hi, my name is Bethany Baca. I am here in support of Adrián Barboa. As someone who lives in District 16 and who has deep roots in New Mexico, I feel that she best represents our community. Not only that, but she's a known member of our community for all the work she's done, and we really appreciate and value her, so I hope that you all choose her. Thank you.
I am Leila Flores Duñez, Professor of the University of New Mexico College of Education. I met Mariana Anaya through Community Theater Arts, and as she moved closer to her graduation from Valley High School, she began inquiring about how to go to college, as she would be the first in her family to do so. I mentored her and involved her in my UNM Family Literacy Program at Dolores González Elementary, where she learned about the value of working with Spanish-speaking mothers to influence their educational outcomes of English language-learning children. Later, while attending the University of Texas at Austin, she studied film and eventually finished her degree in Mexican-American Studies and Policy, where she taught Latinx students in an after-school project and wrote educational policies on behalf of the state's school-age population. Once she went to UCLA in their Graduate Studies Program in Education, she continued to develop her understanding of recognizing community cultural wealth of various populations, a skill that is sorely needed to improve the educational challenges we face in New Mexico. skill that is sorely needed to improve the educational challenges we face in New Mexico, in particular, when it comes to planning for ethnic studies and culturally relevant teaching and learning. As a member of the current task UNM Force on the Yasi Martinez lawsuit, I vouch for Mariana as a critical voice to add to this conversation. Her appointment to the Senate is not only timely, but her knowledge will affect generations of students. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. And I would just like to again ask our speakers to please stay within the 60-second limit, out of respect for our process and everybody who is here today. Thank you.
Celinda Guerrero, Denisea Cadenas, Gabriela Hernandez, Anna Moron.
Madam Chair and Commissioners, I am here to encourage you to appoint Adriane Barboa to the Senate Seat 16. I have had the great benefit of working with Adriane. I also live in that district. She is a powerful voice for our people. She has an incredible love for our community and works tirelessly to serve them. She is a natural leader and is a natural fit for this position. She has deep knowledge of New Mexico policy work and will make it an asset for all New Mexicans in this capacity. I have no doubt that she will make you proud if you appoint her to the seat.
Madam Chair, Members of the Commission, good morning. My name is Denisea Cadenas. I'm here in my personal capacity today, and as a resident of the Near South Valley in District 2 with Commissioner Casada. I've known Adriane for several years, but she first came into my life when I started as a youth intern at Young Women United when I was 17. While many other young people were being given menial tasks, paperwork to do, Adriane really took me aside and mentored me, and that's why I consider I'm in the position today as the Policy Director of Young Women United, though again, I'm speaking in my personal capacity. Adriane has done that for so many young people in our communities, really taken and shaped their lives, listened to what the needs of our communities were. She's worked out in Navajo Nation, in Gallup, to increase voter participation there, while, like she said, so many unlike, so many other people would not turn to those communities. She has bipartisan experience working with Representative Baldonado and others to pass necessary legislation to support young families in our community, and I urge you to support her. Thank you.
Good morning, Chairman, Madam, and Commissioners. My name is Gabriel Hernandez. I'm a resident of Albuquerque and a community activist. I'm here in support of Adrian Barboa. I have the privilege of knowing and working with her over seven years. We first met when she went out of her way to support youth of color and immigrant youth to providing her guidance, coaching, and support. She led us through a strategy meeting and believed in the passion and change youth in our state can do in its doing. Years later, the hard work to better the lives of youth of color, immigrant youth, and families has not stopped. She has worked in policy that has improved the life of youth and better the safety of immigrants in our state. She is the leader of our community. She is the perfect candidate to represent us all. Thank you.
Anna Moron, Alicia Chavez, Michelle Moyaga.
Hello, thank you County Commission for having me here. My name is Anna Moran. I'm a constituent in District 16, colleague of Adriane's, and also a mentee. I consider Adriane someone, I've known her over the last two years, who, like many have said, have brought young people of color, including myself, into the fold, really taking the time to listen, to work with, and to uplift communities. She represents the voice and the needs of our community, and she is already a senator. She is already doing the work that a senator does, has the experience, and is grounded in the voices and the people of her district. Over the time I've known her, I've watched her fight to better the lives, whether to fight for criminal justice reform, fight for immigrant rights, to fight to expand access to reproductive and healthcare for all. She is someone we need desperately, and I hope you vote for her. Thank you so much.
Alicia Chavez, Michelle Moyaga, Joan Lemanyan, Alex Baca.
Good morning, Chair and County Commissioners. I'm here to advocate for Adrian Barboa for Senate District 16. I want to reiterate the need for more, oh, Alicia Chavez, my name is Alicia Chavez. I want to reiterate the need for more diversity and representation for this district. My family has lived in New Mexico and this area for generations. I recently received my master's in community and regional planning at UNM, and I am a community organizer here as well. Adriane embodies the values of healthier communities. I've known her for six and a half years, and she's a proven advocate and leader here. She's been a mentor for me on my pathway in working in community and a positive change for individuals and families within our community. She leads from within, and has been working for women's and people's access to healthcare towards a better life for children and families in our state. Please vote for Adriane Barboa. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Michelle Moyaga, and I am a mother and politically active here in Albuquerque, and I want to advocate for Mariana Anaya. As a mother, I just want to say that I know that Mariana is going to be the person who has the experience with culturally relevant teaching that my son needs. Also, as somebody who volunteers on campaigns and helps with campaigns, Mariana is always there, doing everything from recruiting people to knocking on doors, and I know that she'll be the one who can run a strong campaign in 2020 and hold the seat. Thank you.
Good morning, Members of the Commission. My name is Joan Lemanyan Sanford. I've worked alongside Adriane Barboa since her time as Executive Director at Young Women United, and then through her work at Strong Families. I'm a native of Albuquerque, as Adriane is, and you've already seen and heard how deeply rooted and supported she is by her community. I've seen her work to build consensus across the city and through her work at the Legislature, always looking for community solutions and looking, and I would also like to add that she knows she is deeply rooted in District 16. She knows the people there, and they know her. She's the best appointee for this position. Thank you very much.
Alex Baca, Christopher Ramirez, Amber Royster, Sandra Penn.
Hi, my name is Alex Baca, and I live in Senate District 16. I believe Adriane Barboa is the best candidate for the seat, and clearly, I'm not the only one that thinks so. She's been an amazing advocate for all New Mexicans, especially in regards to reproductive healthcare. As a young queer Latino, I feel it's important to see more representation in our Senate, especially because there's only two women of color in our Senate as it stands. There's no better individual than Adriane for this seat, and I hope you keep this in mind while making a decision. Thank you all.
Christopher Ramirez, Amber Royster, Sandra Penn, Ralph Arianes.
Good morning, Madam Chair and Commissioners. My name is Christopher Ramirez. I'm a constituent in Senate District 16, living on the eastern edge of the district in the International District. I have known Adriane Barboa for many years, and I could add to her support of community-led projects, of mentoring young people, especially young people of color, immigrant, queer, trans, and boys and men of color. I could talk about her experience in the state Legislature, but what I want to talk about most is that Adriane, being from, living her lifetime in this district, has love, she has love for this neighborhood, for this constituency, but also for the entire state of New Mexico. I want to see my next senator be somebody that loves the people of the neighborhood so much that she is willing to do whatever she can to make sure our voices are heard by actually having us speak for ourselves. Thanks, Adriane, for everything you've done for our neighborhood already. Thank you for your time.
Good morning, my name is Amber Royster. I'm a resident of District 16 and the former Director of Equality New Mexico, our state's LGBT civil rights organization. I'm here to express my utmost support for Adriane Barboa. In my capacity at EQ&amp;M, I had the opportunity to work with Adriane on campaigns for marriage equality and to ban conversion therapy, Respect ABQ Women, the New Mexico Safe Schools Initiative, APD Forward, the Healthy Workforce Campaign, and much more. There are many reasons Adriane has always been at the center of these efforts and in most cases asked to lead them. It's because she has spent her life building trust with this community and the people she serves. The only power that Adriane has invested in is that of the people and building it from the ground up, and I've never seen anyone do it better than she does. I've watched her organize thousands of New Mexicans from across the state to raise their voices at the Legislature, many for the first time in their lives, people from all walks of life, inspired to fight for their families, inspired because Adriane is able to reach them and build trust with them. This is who she is, this is the leadership we need. Adriane lives the life most New Mexicans live, that's why she's been so successful in her work as an organizer, and we need more of that represented in our Legislature. Thank you.
Good morning and thank you. My name is Dr. Sandra Penn. I'm a family physician. I've lived and worked in District 16 for the better part of 40 years. I want to support Adriane Barboa. You've heard many reasons. I will say that she listens. She listens to her community, and because of that, she's been successful. I hope you'll support her. Thank you.
Ralph Arianes, Irma Ruiz, Rodney Boe, Bernadette Hardy.
Good morning, Honorable Madam Chair and Burnley County Commissioners. My name is Ralph Arianes. I'm the Chairman of the Hispanic Roundtable of New Mexico. I'm the Executive Director for New Mexico LULAC. And I'm the National Chairman for National LULAC Civil Rights and Social Justice Committee. I stand before you here today to declare my support for Dr. Jennifer Gomez-Chavez for this State Senate seat. Dr. Gomez-Chavez has lived in the district for over 20 years. She holds a Bachelor's in Criminalology, Master's in Counseling, and a Doctorate in Educational Leadership. She has worked at the University of New Mexico for the past 24 years and has 30 years of experience working in higher education and with public education K-12 school districts. Dr. Gomez-Chavez is a lifelong Democrat. She currently serves as a Special Assistant to the Vice President for Equity Inclusion at UNM. And Dr. Gomez-Chavez has been honored by many organizations, but she has, her greatest asset is her compassion to others. And I'd like for all people to support Dr. Jennifer Gomez-Chavez, so please stand up.
Thank you very much, Commissioners. Appreciate your time.
Buenos dias, good morning. Honorable Chair and honorable members of the Burnley County Commission. Thank you for allowing me the opportunity to speak to you this morning. My name is Irma Ruiz. I'm a longtime Democrat of the state of New Mexico, and I serve as Co-Chair of the Hispanic Heritage Committee. I'm here today to voice my support for my colleague, Dr. Jennifer Gomez-Chavez, to be our next New Mexico State Senator for District 16. As Ralph just stated, she is a longtime resident of the district and lives and works in the district. Jennifer is a strong and passionate community leader that I have worked with for many years. She knows how to get the job done. She knows how to compromise, and she knows how to work on both sides of the aisle. Again, thank you for the opportunity to speak to you this morning, and I respectfully ask for your vote to support Dr. Jennifer Gomez-Chavez. Thank you.
Good morning, County Commission Chair Maggie Hart-Stebbins, and members of the Burnley County Commission. I've resided in District 16 for over 25 years. I'm here in support of my colleague, Dr. Jennifer Gomez-Chavez. My name is Rodney Boe, and I'm the Director for the Men of Color Initiative for the Division for Equity Inclusion at the University of New Mexico. Dr. Gomez-Chavez embraces the values of inclusive excellence, along with her colleagues and constituents in the Legislature and in our community, will build a stronger, safer, and healthier Senate, District 16, with priorities on economic development, education, healthcare, and cultural preservation. I wholeheartedly support and humbly ask for her appointment of, for the appointment of Dr. Jennifer Gomez-Chavez to District 16 Senate Seat. Thank you.
Bernadette Hardy, Derek Chavez, Anne Sims, Adan Kariaga.
Hello, my name is Bernadette Hardy. I'm a co-coordinator for the International District Healthy Communities Coalition, which is a public health organization. I'm also a member of the Navajo Nation and Hama's Publ. I have been working with Dr. Jennifer Gomez-Chavez in different community circles for many, many years. Dr. Jennifer Gomez-Chavez's accomplishments are vast, but all with a common thread. Jen has always been steadfast in creating and supporting initiatives and programs of all people of color, even supporting families and individuals in the International District in continuing their education or completing their dreams of higher education. I am very honored to support the appointment of Dr. Jennifer Gomez-Chavez for Senate 16. Thank you.
My name is Derek Chavez, Honorable Chair and honorable members of the Burnley County Commission. I am, attend Albuquerque High School, and I want to introduce you to my mother, Dr. Jennifer Gomez-Chavez. She's the best candidate for Senator for District 16. She's the hardest-working person I know. Every hour, she's out late in the community, making sure the community is a better place and helping students and everyone advocate. I'm here to humbly ask you to appoint the most important person in my life to the Mexico State Senate, District 16, my mother, Dr. Jennifer Gomez-Chavez. Thank you.
Good morning, and thank you for giving me the opportunity to support Christopher Papaleo for Senate Seat 16, District 16. I'm Anne Sims, and I'm his mother. Chris has a lifelong history of volunteering and being involved in community activities. He was part of his Neighborhood Association in District 16, and I might add that he does live in our family home where I was born and I was also raised. He has been in election protection. He has been part of raising awareness and making sure kids in elementary schools have coats. He's very proud of his Marshall Brennan Fellowship Award. He has the ability to analyze any situation, break it down, figure out the steps, bring people together, and then be involved in the solution. He has a very deep sense of commitment to anything he's involved in. I have more to say, but in the sense of time, I think that he is the best candidate for this position, and I appreciate your consideration.
Adan Kariaga, Stephanie Hands, Kayla Herring, Jessa McKelvey.
Madam Chair, County Commissioners, I know Dr. Chavez in a little bit of a different way.
Sir, could you please state your name for the record?
Excuse me?
State your name.
Oh, my name is Adan Kariaga, and I'm an artist and a community advocate for behavioral health. And my relationship with Dr. Gomez is a little bit different. I don't know her from the university, I don't know her from different things like that. I know her from the community. And she's a strong advocate for the arts, which is really, she's really enhanced that for us, and always advocating for us and through different organizations, helping us get these sponsorships and things like that. I also, as many of you know, my wife is Brazilian, and so I'm very linked to the immigrant community, and Dr. Gomez is certainly involved in the immigration communities and the efforts that we take, that take place in that. Also in behavioral, also in behavioral health, I know that, I didn't even know she was a doctor. I just knew her from the community, and one day, we were talking, and she said, I'm a, she told me about her education, I go, wow, honor, right? And so I know that sometimes she'll come across students or something that may have a behavioral health or substance abuse problem, and will get her to get them, get them the assistance that they need. I would like to support Dr. Gomez. Thank you.
Good morning, my name is Stephanie Hands. I work at the University of New Mexico. I've known Dr. Jennifer Gomez-Chavez for over 20 years. We grew up together at UNM campus. I live and work in the district. I wanted to let you know a little bit about Jennifer. There is one word that describes her perfectly, and that is advocate. She has fought and advocated for people her entire life. She advocates for educational rights for students, she advocates for health and treatment of people living with MS. She has always fought for the civil liberties and rights of people, both adults and children of Albuquerque and New Mexico. She is an advocate and a fighter. She will fight for what she believes in, she will challenge any voice if she feels it is right. She has had years of experience representing people of New Mexico in Washington. She will listen, she will continue to learn, and she won't stop. I do not believe you will find a better person who will work harder and give more to this position and the community. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Kayla Herring, and I'm a constituent in Senate District 16 in support of Adriane Barboa. I know first and foremost how important it is that our senator represent myself and my neighbors. Adriane will fill that role in two ways. One, by being a queer woman of color voice in a Senate that's lacking that voice. And two, because Adriane understands New Mexico values and what makes our families and communities strong, healthy, and successful, because she works in that community directly and has spent her whole life doing so. Please vote for Adriane Barboa.
Hi, my name is Jessa McKelvey. I am here in support of Adrian Barboa. It is important-
It is important now more than ever that we have a senate that is representative of the community that it serves. Adrienne is a young woman of color who can not only be the fierce reproductive health champion that we need, but as you can see from the diversity of people who are here to support her today, is also a respected leader in the community that New Mexican families and constituents in District sixteen need to see elected to the senate. Thank you.
Ceci Velasco. Isabella Baker. Andres Valdez.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Ceci Velasco, and I feel incredibly honored to support my friend, mentor, coworker, and chosen family, Adrienne Barboa, in a quest to represent the people of Senate District sixteen. Adrienne took me under her wing since I met her about seven years ago, and has taught me so much about grassroots organizing and about life. She leads and organizes with love, and she can walk into any room, a room filled with legislators or community, and she can form connections and relationships with just about anyone. And this is a skill that's essential for any legislator. And no matter who is in that room, Adrienne is someone who isn't afraid to ask the tough questions. She will stand up and make sure that our communities aren't left out or excluded. How do I know this? Because I work with her and have seen, and I've seen her do this time and time again. And I know that she will always make the best decisions and vote with the best interest of all New Mexicans. She will work extremely hard and will represent District sixteen with so much love and pride. And summary, she's a powerhouse, and we need her in the senate. And I asked, I ask you all to please appoint Adrienne Barboa to Senate District sixteen. Thank you.
My apologies, there was an error in the last name read. So the last speaker is Isabella Baker.
Hi, Board Members. Obviously, I'm not Isabella Baker. She's actually in class right now, but she really wanted to have her voice heard. My name is Isaiah Moya. So, good morning, members of the board. I've known Adrienne Barboa personally for about two years now, but before that, I knew that whenever anyone said the name Adrienne, everyone in the room knew exactly who she was, regardless of whether or not they knew her personally. She is and has always been so present in the community, not only in Albuquerque but around the state, that everyone knows her name. Everyone remembers her name because she is always fighting for others and what they, what the community needs to be happy and healthy and safe. She is incredibly strong and caring for everyone, even if she doesn't know them. She is always there to protect and fight for her community and what is right. And she's running for appointment in Senate District sixteen. Please vote for her.
Thank you. That concludes public comment. Great. I want to ask Commissioners if anyone has any questions at this point in time about our process?
Madam Chair, I think there's been a problem with people that were, I guess, wanted to speak. Some people were not familiar with the process. A list was never put out for people to sign up, so there's been a confusion, and some people wanted to speak on my behalf, if you would please permit them.
Sir, I'm going to follow our standard process that we observe at every county commission meeting, so the rule is you need to sign up before the meeting starts. We have done everything possible, including notifying candidates about this process, and so I'm just going to say thank you for your request, but I cannot honor it.
Thank you, but you did not put out a list for people to sign.
I know there was a list out, starting at nine o'clock this morning, for anybody who wished to sign up today. All right, just want to review this process with our county attorney. I will open the floor for nominations from county commissioners, and then we will vote in the order in which those nominations are made. Correct? Questions, comments? All right, I open the floor for nominations.
I have a comment that I'd like to, Madam Chair.
Please go ahead.
First of all, I'm very impressed with the candidates that have walked into this They all bring something different to the table, some overlap, but most have a unique, some spoke on issues and some spoke not on some issues. You know, I think that we have so many different things that we look at here at Burnley County, and I think it's reflective of what the state looks at. I think that we could probably nominate, you know, pretty much anyone and feel some point of the gap that we, overall, looking at a picture. I know that I have the right to nominate who I'd like to see do this. And I'm going to be honest, I think that everybody's great, I think everybody, again, brings something to the table, but my belief is that there's been somebody here who has been working for this community for ten years, who has been working on everything that's on this list that I wrote down, that each candidate has, had brought forward, and I've gotten a couple of calls, and I've gotten quite a few emails from certain people stating that, you know, they're really looking at who is looking over the overall picture. Again, not just looking at one specific or two or three different specific things. I think everybody brings good policy, I think everybody has some experience working in Santa Fe. But I would like to just do one more time and try one more time, and I would like to nominate Commissioner Maggie Hart-Stevens to take the senate seat in District sixteen, just because I believe that she would bring the full picture, the full understanding of what we need as the state and a great partner for the county. And the reason why, another reason why I'm saying that is that all these candidates who are fantastic and great and have worked in the community for a long time, I've never really met them before today, or I've never really heard about them before today. They've never made a meeting with me. I'm a county commissioner, and I work in the district, and I work in the state of New Mexico, and nobody has called me and says, hey, we're working on this, we're working on that. And so I would like to just do that nomination one more time, just to see what we get from there, and then I would like to move forward. So I've moved a nomination for Commissioner Maggie Hart-Stevens.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. And I think I need to address this before we move forward with other nominations. I first want to say I am deeply honored by this, by your support, by the support that I have received from people throughout the community, and I have given this very serious thought, very serious consideration about seeking this nomination. I decided that it was not the right time for me, not the right fit. I am very committed to the work that I do here on the county commission, and in reviewing the resumes and learning the backgrounds of the candidates, I have really come to believe that I am not the best candidate. So I, again, want to say how deeply honored I am by the confidence that you all have in me, but I think the line is, if nominated, I will not run, if elected, I will not serve. And so I think I will, at this point, take myself out of consideration. But again, I want to thank you all for your confidence. Thank you for the second, Commissioner Talbert. And with that, unless there are other questions about that, we'll move to nominations. Commissioner Talbert.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd like to nominate Dr. Jennifer Gomez Chavez.
Do we have a second? We have a nomination for Jennifer Gomez Chavez. Do we have a second? All right, seeing none, we will move. Do we have any other nominations? Commissioner O'Malley.
Yes, I'd like to nominate Antoinette Sidio Lopez.
A second.
We have a nomination of Antoinette Sidio Lopez, and a second from Commissioner Casada. Do we have any other nominations? We have any other nominations? All right, I will nominate Adrienne Barboa. Do we have a second? All right, do we have a second? Right? Seeing no second, we have just one last call. Any other nominations? Any other nominations? All right, seeing none, it looks like we have one person nominated and seconded for the appointment to the Senate District sixteen appointment. That would be Antoinette Sidio Lopez. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post. That motion passes unanimously. Congratulations. And again, I would, again, like to thank everybody who submitted his or her name. I want to thank everybody who came today. It was very clear to me that there were really no bad choices, and I feel we will be well-represented at this point in time. So with that, do we need to sign anything? All right, seeing that our business is done, this meeting is adjourned.